This is how I presented you all's page. And it has the mayor and then contact information for the mayor and then the bio. And it's the same for everybody else. Their picture, their contact information, and the bio that was submitted from before. If you'd like to change your bio or your picture or anything, just let me know.
You look 12, Bill.
I was 12.
So.
That's my eighth great picture.
I also put the meeting, the video recordings. When you click there, I haven't gone to our channel on YouTube. I don't know if everybody knows we have a channel on YouTube that you can watch any and all meetings that we've recorded, starting with the one that Commissioner Wilder recorded for us. And they're listed here. There's a playlist by dates that people can go back and listen to. Is there anything else that y'all want to see? I know it kind of went through kind of fast and we can get this put online for you all to review and make other comments on.
Yeah, I was gonna add that I'd like to have a little link where I can kind of explore and see different things to go check it out.
Yes, we can do that.
I like.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous today, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I do think that this alone is a pretty vast improvement. I mean, just looking at the homepage and being able to see where the information that people access the most, you know.
Yes, uh-huh.
A lot of information is being made, a lot more available to the public with this. I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
The calendar.
Yes.
There's a calendar link in there.
Yes.
Which is good, obviously. Does that link, can we see that?
Yes.
Does that, can somebody click on today's Board of Commissioners meeting and see the agenda?
I will add that. I will add the agenda, yes, I will.
And also, you know, the main purpose of the website being to just let the public know what's slated for discussion, but also what we are doing and what we have done. It seems that a link to minutes that have been approved would be handy as well.
Yes, I do. And over here under current activities, I have the agendas for this month listed too, in case people don't want to go on the calendar. And under city government, I have a link there for minutes. I don't have, these are the current ones that I have. I need to get with Ramona to get last year's and this year's, but if you click on one of these, it opens right up to the minutes that have been approved.
Great.
And if you want, I can put, I can put a link out here on this homepage on the side for minutes too.
And then you don't have to search.
Okay.
I think that, and linking, I think those could probably be linked through the calendar as well.
Yes, uh-huh, they can.
Would it, about the YouTube videos. My understanding in the folks from the New York State Senate who came down to talk to us about using YouTube to host their public meetings. They were posting full videos instead of videos that were broken up into 30-minute segments, and they said that YouTube had accounts available for governments?
They do. I'm gonna have to buy another program to merge all those together because they come separately and we have to merge them together. And the program I was using before, they got the video and the voice off a little bit, so I stopped using it.
I see.
And so, we'll have to purchase a program to make it all just one long video.
So you're saying that when it's recorded on the console back there, it's breaking it into?
Well, what I have to do is convert it into another format. I use it converted, you can convert it into an MP.
MP4?
Three or four file, but I usually convert it to a Windows video file. And then, from there, it breaks it up because on the video itself, it has it in segments.
I see.
And then, I used to merge them together before I noticed that, you know, the video and audio was off.
Right.
So, we can redo that again.
Would it be, would it be possible to embed the most current video on the homepage?
Yes, uh-huh. I was embedding them on the pages before, but we can do that.
Is that reasonable? I think that.
Did you want me to put it under current activities there or somewhere else? Just say, current video of meetings or something like that, where people can see it?
I would say, under these, if I can, under where we have our announcements at. We could embed the video in there and say, most recent city commission meeting.
Okay.
And then you can program it to take off or be removed.
Yes.
Once the next commission meeting is done.
Yes, okay.
So that, for example, right now, looking at this page, somebody would actually see the square video box and could just play it?
Right.
Just right there, if they wanted to watch the most recent meeting?
All right. Is there anything else?
I would just like to make sure all the department heads feel comfortable with it and have all the information they want in it.
Let's look at one of the departments, let's look at.
Or if there's anything they want added before it was to go live.
Okay. This is just the Chief Possage's page. I made a change on his page, let me show you a different page. This finance page has a lot of different stuff in it. Okay. Here's the finance page. And what I've done is, over here on the right-hand side, I've put the forms and anything related to finance that people would want to know, FAQs, contacts, whatever is all on the page. If you want it rearranged differently, but all his stuff is on this page. The budget summary and everything. If you click on finance contacts, I'll just click there. Then this has just everybody in their department listed. And, I mean, I guess it's up to you all or the person if they want the photo, or, right now, we don't have, I don't have photos of everybody, I just usually have of the directors and you all. I think I got one of Angie and Steve on there, their contact information. And that's what mostly all the contacts have the same thing.
In regard to citizens having the ability to possibly pay garbage taxes or whatever might be sent to them, could they be able to pay their taxes online or something? Is that an ability that this website could hold?
Yes, uh-huh.
Making a payment option?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Which would be one less, you know, ideally is that everyone could just pay online and we wouldn't even have to send out any letters.
Finance department, I mean, yeah.
Well, I'll just say, in terms of the aesthetics of the site, I can't speak for anybody else, I think it looks fine. I'm not really concerned about that. I'm happy to give you all total leeway in that regard. I think the only thing that really matters to me is that it's navigable and that it helped just get as much public information, especially, you know, particularly relevant information to the public as possible, you know. Make public information as accessible to the public as possible. I think this does a much better job than our last side of that.
Right. It's a lot that clicks.
Yeah.
I think I counted once, I was just trying to do something, I think it was like seven to eight clicks to get somewhere.
Yeah, on the other website?
Uh-huh.
Yes. On here, I try to make it, if not one, two. At the most, I think I have three, but I'm trying to get it down to two, if I can, which I think I can.
And this is, and this has been put together with open source?
Yes.
Open source software?
Open source software. Everything's free.
That's great.
Yay!
And it took me a long time, but I hope I did a pretty good job here.
I think, I think you have, and I understand it took some time to, you know, wrap your head around the new, the new software.
Yes.
But is it fair to say that now that you, you do have a grip on it, that making changes and adjustments and upkeeping the site will be a lot easier?
Yes, yes, I feel real good about learning this and all that I've done. I feel proud of myself that I did it this far.
You should.
Some of the stuff is a little tricky, but just working with it every day.
Good work, very good work.
Okay. What I'll do is, when I get it out on the internet, I'll email you all the links and other things so you can take a look at it and if you have any other comments, I'll go ahead and put the agendas on the calendar and the meetings and the minutes and all that, and put that on the calendar too. And add the video, put it, embed the iframe inside the homepage. And I guess I need to talk with Steve about what payment options. I know we have the pay-as-you-throw, what about like property taxes and things like that? Y'all want all that too?
I think talking to the finance department and trying to figure out billing processes that his department would like to see, I think would be a better route than us as the commission making that decision. That's just my own personal opinion.
And that could be something that might be warranted in a, just for its own discussion in another work session, because there's kind of three elements. I mean, one is giving people the ability to pay bills online if they want to.
Sure.
The other is giving people the ability to sign up for electronic billing, which is different. So as in one thing, let's say somebody gets a paper bill in the mail, they can just log online and pay it without having to mail anything off or come down to City Hall. The other would give people the option to sign up for electronic billing where they actually just get emailed a bill. And then, something else that might be worth discussing is the possibility of, well, of automatic, like of automatic billing or automatic withdrawal, if that's more convenient for people.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, is that something you think we could discuss in a later work session? Because that probably is its own discussion, right?
More feasibility, I think. Like making sure the department's okay with it.
Yeah.
Do you think maybe, maybe Steve, you could just think about that and give us your thoughts so that we'll get it on the agenda for one of the work sessions next month?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks guys.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Charlene.
Good job.
Thank you, sorry, I was so nervous.
No, you did fine.
The next item would be a discussion about board appointment process.
I'll start by, Mr. Owens. Several months ago, we got together and looked over some various ordinances and aspects of City Hall that if we could change, we would like to see changed. One of the things that I brought up was the board appointment process, and not because this has been an issue in my term as a city commissioner, but I could see it, you know, in the past or in the future. The primary aspect of that that I'd like to talk about is giving the commission a little more time when a nomination comes up, so that, for example, before the vote can go down to nominate or approve someone to have the 30 days or something like that, that way you can have time to call the person or review their resume or whatnot. Ms. Gibbs also brought up in her citizens' comment, the process for removal of board members, and I think that, I don't know if we could do a blanket, you know, solution for all boards that we have, if removal is necessary. But I'm also open to discuss, you know, the commission's thoughts on that as well. But primarily was just tossing around the idea of maybe getting, you know, 30 days or 20 days or something, had some notice ahead of time about board appointments so that it gives us as commissioners the opportunity to do our due diligence in researching the nominees, so.
I support that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor.
I've tried, since I've been mayor, I know, I believe we said that, I've asked how long we're supposed to have, you know, notice for them, they said if you get it on the work session, it should give you two weeks. I've tried to do that, in most instances, that's the case, and even more. But I agree, you should have plenty of time.
In terms of, in terms of ordaining that length of time, I mean, I'd be comfortable setting it even smaller, just requiring at least five, five business days in advance. I mean, because it's just a little impossible, I think, obviously, the mayor.
I understand what you said in the end.
Oh, I don't think we, I don't think we'd even need to necessitate 30 or 20 days. I think, from my perspective, I think five days would be, would be fine, in terms of setting a formal standard. So I think that you and, I mean, any, any responsible mayor is obviously going to try to give us as much time as possible. I think we understand that sometimes you have to fill a seat with less than 30 days notice. I mean, sometimes that just happens. So I mean, I think 30 days might be a bit heavy, but I think, I think five, five would, I think would give us plenty of time. And I think, and as long as the only other criteria is that we're given, you know, contact information for the appointees. But I think, I think five days notice and contact information are really all we need.
And that's fine with me, I just, I'd like to have a standard, you know, that, you know, ahead of time, this is how many days you've got and move on.
I don't see any problems with that. Commissioner?
I'd say just, instead of making an order, it's probably better to make that an order, instead of an ordinance. It still has the same effect.
That's not a bad point.
I mean, in order, we could vote hard next week, couldn't we?
I have no opposition to doing it next week, if that's the board. We have consensus for an order.
Just as, just a little added comment here, meaning in somewhat jest, sometimes you have to wrestle with people to even get a name out there. I'm just saying that.
Oh, no doubt.
So, I agree, you should have plenty of time to do, yeah.
So does that, so does that mean that staff will prepare in order for next, for our next voting agenda? Just specifying?
Yeah.
Five days and contact information?
Five days and contact information.
I think Mr. Baughman has indicated that can be done, but next week. If someone would be so nice as to turn the lights back up, thank you.
May I ask that?
Commissioner Hayden?
That if with the order, we make it a minimum of five days? Not to say that 30 days couldn't be greater, but a minimum of five days?
Five working days.
Five working days.
Five working days.
That's a good, good point.
Is that okay?
Yes.
And just one more quick thing, and if we could get maybe some thoughts from Mr. Moore when he gets back on sort of tackling the removal of board members, not that there's any one in particular, any of them that I feel that way, but I think Ms. Gibbs brings up a valid point for future concern. I don't know that there is a process put in place, and if so, it's probably different among each board, so if we could just get an up summary and maybe some of his thoughts on how to do that.
Commissioner May? Some of the, some of the appointments are governed already in ordinances and also in statutes. We won't be able to do anything about statutory boards that have those requirements spelled out in statutes.
Yes.
Just a point here.
Am I correct in understanding that in most cases, we do have provisions in place? I mean, if somebody, if the mayor appoints somebody to the board and the commission approves them, and then they're literally just not showing up or literally not serving? I mean, I assume we already have provisions in place that would allow us to reappoint somebody else to actually fill that seat, right?
Some, sorry, Mayor, some of the boards do not have a process listed, and a few of them do. Trying to think of one that does not. Nothing's coming to, right off the top of my head, right now, but we can.
That's one of the things you need, I think it's important, this process for that. You need to think about whether you want the city manager to notify somebody who doesn't attend regularly, that sort of thing. Give them a second chance, or what kind of process you want. You might not want to just remove them without any notice, so you all need to think about that. When we're drawing it up, we can touch base with you and see what you suggest. But I'm sure it's something you've all thought about, and you want to be fair, but you don't want to leave somebody there forever who's not interested.
Sure. Thank you.
I think that could be handled in a reasonable.
I think so.
Sure.
Type of ordinance or order. Any more on that?
Okay, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item for discussion is about employee compensation policies.
How would we have a board that this, what's discussion?
I think commission discussion.
All right. Commissioner, want to jump in on this? Commissioner Wilder?
This is something that we've discussed, discussing, I guess, since, since the beginning of last year when we were setting, you know, priorities for the term. I think, I think one of the things that, one of the things we talked about addressing is the concept of longevity pay. Longevity pay runs in three-year cycles. The previous commission discussed the possibility of doing away with longevity pay entirely, but instead compromised and voted to essentially phase it out. So they reduced it from 3% to 1% for a three-year cycle that's about, that's going to end soon. And it was then set to phase out, it's being, well, set to be phased out and replaced with a kind of different version of longevity pay that doesn't actually guarantee any longevity pay, but that essentially, you know, gives the commission the power to set, to kind of set longevity pay in three-year cycles, if there's money in the budget. One of the, all right, well, and it also, the old longevity pay is flat across the board, and then the, in the, in the new version, it's actually kind of variable based on performance, which I, you know, I've always had mixed feelings about. On one hand, in the private sector, I mean, I think it makes sense in a lot of ways to give people raises or not give people raises, you know, based on, based on their performance. I think there's, there's a lot of things that are, I think, perfectly acceptable in the private sector that don't necessarily belong in the public sector. I mean, I think an easy example would be if in the, if in the private sector, if a business is doing well and wants to hire a bunch of, a bunch of unemployed folks in the community, even though they don't really need the work done, but just out of the kindness of their hearts in order to give them jobs, I think that's a very admirable thing in the private sector, when folks do that. When you do that with public funds, obviously, that becomes very inappropriate. And I just bring that up as an example of, you know, there are differences between the public and private sectors. One of the concerns about performance-based pay, particularly in the public safety departments, has been that there can be real dangers and, real dangers and problems associated with encouraging kind of higher performance output from, well, you know, police officers and fire officers. I mean, you don't, whether or not a fire officer, you know, whether or not a firefighter, for example, perform, you know, outperforms their peers in some circumstances is purely a matter of, well, circumstance. I mean, if somebody has the opportunity to, you know, rescue three puppies from three structure fires, or three families from three structure fires, and somebody else is prepared to do that but doesn't, just doesn't get called on any structure fires, and then, what, I'm not suggesting anybody would ever do this, but you know, I mean, what are you supposed to do to get your, your structure fire performance up? Go start some structure fires so you can rescue some people? I mean, that's, there's something to be said in the public safety world and for just kind of treating everybody the same and fair across the board, as long as folks are doing their jobs, then, then everybody gets treated the same, so there's less kind of interdepartmental competition. I mean, I guess, you know, my, there are, you know, our compensation policy was overhauled pretty heavily when the longevity was phased from 3% to 1%. Longevity was just one piece of that. I think, I think lots of, lots of pieces of that have gone down, have gone down well enough, but I would still be in favor of, of some across-the-board longevity and of a guaranteed minimum. Even, I mean, even if it's just 1% or 2% instead of 3%. I guess I'll open the discussion with that. I mean, this is kind of a big melting pot of concepts.
Can you hear me? Commissioner Turner?
I too also like to look at the compensation policy. And let me just state that, you know, the purpose of longevity pay, at least in my opinion, thoughts, it's not necessarily, traditionally has been there to reward outstanding performance, but more so to reward loyalty. I can remember when I first came onto the commission and met with Chief Will Boyd and Chief Possage, and one of the main things that we talked about was the amount of time and treasure that goes into training these new recruits and new employees that we bring in. And if, you know, a lot of times what the city, we will see from other departments or what Lexington and Louisville will see from us, is that we'll put the training and the money and invest the time into these employees, and they'll stay for a year and then they'll go on to, you know, a place like Lexington or Louisville or some other organization like that that may have a higher pay scale or whatnot. Longevity pay was a way for us to combat that and try to retain some of those employees that we've invested so much time and effort into. But, you know, in terms of looking at, you know, okay, well, we got rid of the longevity pay, where do we go from here? I don't know that it's economically feasible for us to be able to reinstate, you know, the full longevity that once existed here in the city. But looking at other alternatives, you know, that might be, you know, maybe a much smaller percentage increase, you know, just so that we are still finding some way we can reward these employees for staying and giving their full effort to the city, that's what, you know, sort of I see as the end game here and the goal, or my personal goal by the end of this term.
Commissioner May?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. One of the most important resources, of course, that we have is, is the, uh, city staff, the city employees who provide the services, and if we can do something to retain folks, that's very important to me. Uh, if, if we can look at different options, different percentages, but also if, I don't know if we've considered, or the staff's considered, looking at a five-year longevity plan, for instance, just as a talking point, I don't know, that might be more palatable, more affordable, more acceptable, I don't know. The unfortunate thing is with the bad economy that we have, that's, that's what got us into the, the situation where those decisions were made, and until the economy gets better, I, I don't know what we're going to be faced with in the coming, uh, budget, or the next, next cycle after that, but I think at some point, we just need to get started on some kind of program that can be modified later when, um, the financial, financial situation in the city gets better, and can always be modified to reflect that.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden?
Um, I would like just to, to chime in sort of more of what Commissioner Turner was saying, when I, I guess also with Bill, with, at least setting up a plan. But it's hard to always give someone a raise, but there are things that we can look at as a provider, which is looking at maybe quarterly benefits, maybe every department head puts in a name of an employee they think is doing great, and we look at more of like a benefit option, maybe that person gets three hundred dollars for being a really great employee, and so people start trying to strive up to that mark, which doesn't take two hundred thousand dollars out of our budget, but every quarter, maybe we spend two hundred, three hundred dollars to let someone work up to it. Um, but also think about anniversary, you know, when an employee's been here for, for so long, yes, it's nice to have the longevity plan, but it's not always practical within our budget, but to think about something, maybe we give them, you know, a fifty dollar gift card, you've been here for so long, versus spending too much at once. Um, and the other thing I'd like to see, as well as maybe thinking about pay time off for good employees, you've been such a good, you have been such a good employee, here's some extra days, you know, don't feel guilty about being sick, don't feel guilty about taking a vacation and treating yourself and spending more time with your family.